Need to hold to order, roll call please. Yeah, here.
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 We have a quorum. First item this morning for discussion is a discussion on credit card fee and update. Good morning, Bill.
All right, good morning. We talked about credit card fees a long time ago, probably early 2020. So been a while, but here we are, we're going to talk about them today. And give you a little summary where we're at. I really don't have a recommendation where we would go with them. And you'll kind of see that as when we come through here. But so a payment processor acts as an intermediary between the business and then, you know, the customer that's going to swipe their card with us. So we have to have someone to to make those, you know, transactions happen. They don't just happen because of our system. So we need a credit card processor. Payment card processors, then, they charge a fee when we do that. And they always have charged a fee since we started probably back in the mid 90s. That's when we probably started taking credit cards. And average fees range between one and a half to three and a half percent per transaction. So 2021, we're estimating that our annual credit card fees will be about $240,000. So that is quite a bit of fees for credit cards. And we'll go through what we're accepting those for. The majority of those are for the liquor store. Certainly, we are running a retail business. So we are accepting debit and credit cards like any other retail business. And that's about $150,000. Our Cayan is the processor for that. That's the company, Cayan. We have to use Cayan. We can't go out for proposals on that right now because our system at the liquor store is a total register system is the proprietary name of that. And we can only use Cayan with that system. The good news is, I don't know, good news, bad news. We'll be replacing that system in the next couple of years. Then we'll be able to go out for proposals and look for, you know, a competitive fee on that if possible. So we are receiving a lot of credit card payments and cash payments as we no longer accept checks. So we're not dealing with NSF checks. And of course, we see that across the board at a lot of places where checks are no longer taken. And of course, these are card present transactions only because it's a walk-in store. There's nothing online with our liquor store, of course, with that. So those are only in place. Okay, RevTrack is our other processor. And we started that quite a number of years ago. We use RevTrack because the school district went on with RevTrack to keep things kind of consistent within the city as a whole. So that's processing all other transactions. And we take online and then in person. So in person here at City Hall, out at the landfill. But online also, if you think about all our registrations for summer rec programs where you can register and do that. RevTrack is the program that does the registering as well, that Park and Rec uses. So liquor store point of sale, I talked about total register systems implemented back in '09. We talked about Cayan. It's about two and a half percent of the sales for Cayan. So the fees are just an operating expense. They're built into our pricing out there of the product. So kind of like you would at any other retail establishment. And I also said that we will look at replacing that point of sale system here in the next couple of years, probably. So RevTrack is the other one. We implemented back in '05. You can see the various things that we're receiving credit cards for utilities, landfill, park and rec, special assessment payments, fees, fines, permits through our front desk, and any other miscellaneous payments. And that's about 3.3%. Yes, that is a higher percentage. But keep in mind, this program is also doing our registration and all that. For if you're going on summer rec, you're doing that through RevTrack. So it's doing more than just processing credit card fees on that one.
Hey, Bill, sorry, did I miss? Did you give us a number what that two, the liquor store? What is the, what is that processing fee right now?
Two and a half percent.
Two and a half, got it, sorry. Sorry, I missed.
So that is a little bit less than our RevTrack. So with RevTrack, enterprise funds, so water, sewer, storm, stormwater, refuse fund, they make up about 85% of what we are receiving payments by credit card. So therefore, we allocate those costs out to the refuse, sewer, and water funds, our main utility funds. So we're just getting that bill in for credit card fees. We allocate it three ways each month because the bulk of them go there. We don't take the time to say, okay, this special assessment was paid here. Let's allocate that fee. Just the cost versus benefit of allocating out that fee wouldn't be there. So then also 74% of of those are online payments. So people at home going on, paying their bill, and then using their credit card for that. So again, those fees are just considered an operating fee as well. So it's basically built in the utility rates. That is our next topic on the agenda here this morning. Now RevTrack would have the ability to attach a credit card surcharge to those transactions. Certainly has that ability. Now, we have a little problem over on on this side. I'll talk about that a little bit. But obviously, at the liquor store, that we probably wouldn't attach a separate fee for using a credit card as we're a retail establishment, just like if you're going to Walmart or Walgreens, something like that. Here, you could do that. But our system is linked such that we download those transactions off of RevTrack, match them to the utility accounts so they can get applied that way. We would need to do some reprogramming to get where will that credit card fee go, you know, maybe off over here to an admin fee. We can certainly do that if that would be the council's wishes. We just couldn't do that right away. And that's, we have a retirement coming in our IT area. You know, not too far into 2022. And I know we would not get programming on another project going as we are doing the Bigwood Center, you know, technology update and several other projects. So I'm just being realistic with that, that that wouldn't happen in the near future. Okay, so that's my slides on there, just kind of a short presentation. But it gives you the lay of the land where we're at with credit card fees. Again.
Got a question, Bill. Sorry, I was kind of reading ahead. Maybe you mentioned this, so I apologize. So that two and a half percent, the major one that I see an opportunity to lower, well, all of them maybe, but the liquor store, if we had a competitive bid on that, that's a lot of money going through there. And I'm sure that processors, if it wasn't proprietary to the, you know, to the hardware we're using, would want to bid on. You know, we could probably get, I know that's a competitive market and people bid on the opportunity. So anyway, question is, is do we know like if if we went from two and a half percent to one and a half, what that would, did you?
I don't know.
And I don't mean, I don't need to get into the weeds.
We need to dig into it because it's not an option right now.
Sure.
Until we, until we move to a different point of sale system.
Sure.
It's not an option. And with, again, looking to where we are with IT and the future retirements, the point of sale isn't going to happen.
Probably.
We can look at, I mean, we can definitely look at it, maybe, but it's just right now isn't something that we can even consider.
And we're looking at maybe later '22, more likely in '23, would be the point of sale system for the liquor store. I think we're projecting.
And that being said, the two and a half percent is very close to our previous processor.
Sure, okay.
Cayan is close to.
And we, did we have US Bank before?
Yes.
So a major processor prior to Cayan, too.
Yeah, Tom.
Just out of curiosity, how did, how did US Bank and Elon compare for fees when you used them before? Do you have any recollection of that?
You were thinking they're pretty, pretty close.
Okay, because.
Yeah.
I've got experience. I actually did a lot of credit card work in retail banking.
Sure.
I know that Elon at the time had a deal where if you brought your business to them, they'd beat your rate no matter what it was. So the, so you said that the the card processing fees are kind of built into the pricing out at the liquor store?
Yep, it's just rolling through operations. So as Brandon's setting his prices across the store.
Yep, just the cost of doing business because you have to take cards.
Yep, that's how we're treating it right.
As far as the the RevTrack, you know, I pay my utility bill with my checking account every month because it, there's not as high a fee. Or is there any fee to do it by ACH?
There is no fee. That's a good point that we.
So, you know, if if there are ways that we can incentivize people to to do that, you know, just just point out, hey, you know what? It's going to save your tax dollars if you change this over to your checking account versus your credit card.
Kelsey just did that, right? So Kelsey, our new utility billing person, she, she was right on your wavelength with that. Sent out a mailing, I believe, right? Or was it with the utility bills? So went out with the utility bills promoting that. And she was, got a lot more participation. And we'll continue to do that because, like you say, people don't, you know, kind of out of sight, out of mind. So put it in front of them every once in a while. And it's easy for us, too, because we're pulling those. We're not processing checks or credit cards even. It's all done in a batch of ACH.
Yep, Lynn has.
We did the utility insert about three months ago. I checked with Kelsey, just as she said hundreds came in just by doing a direct.
Perfect, yeah.
We'll probably do another one later or early in 2022.
Yeah.
But yeah, she got hundreds.
Yeah, figure out a way to make it as easy as possible for people to switch it. So I mean, that's one, one little bit. But I mean, it sounds like our hands are pretty much tied unless we, until we replace that POS. That's a pretty good deal that Cayan's got going on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thanks, guys.
Yeah, Jim.
You know, I think like with our liquor store, our profits are pretty doggone good where they're at. I don't know that we want to mess with that. And I think everything overall has been going quite well. So why, why even mess with it at this point, anyway? Because we're not getting anything done for a year or two until we get a new IT person in there to do all that. Let's just leave it the way it is. It's a good report. Thank you.
You bet. And yeah, out at the liquor store, Brandon, our manager, does do a great job. Our gross profit percentages are some of the highest in the state and in our region, certainly. So he is doing a really good job with managing the store and setting his levels of inventory and pricing. So.
Scott. Ben, you were asking what kind of, what difference it might make if we were to change the rate. And just rough math, if two and a half percent nets us $150,000 or costs us $150,000, if we were even able to drop it to two, we'd say it was $30,000. So, and that wouldn't change anything as far as our operations, you know, wouldn't change our. Again, that's down the road.
Yep.
A full year or more, probably. But being able to save $30,000, well, I think we could find a place to put 30 grand.
Absolutely.
And that was, yeah, I appreciate that, Scott. And that was the kind of the point. I just, with with our business, I just went through this process of changing POS systems and going through that negotiation. And there is room, you know, and that's down the road. I'm not saying that we have to, you know, we're in a contract with Cayan, I get it. But the point is, is there is opportunities to lower rates. And those rates do add up to dollars. So anyway, that's my one.
And we will be changing that point of sale system because it's kind of timing out on its useful life and then the service of it as well. So we'll have no choice but to change it, which is a good thing. We'll get to, you know, we planned for it. The funds are there to replace that point of sale system. And then also look at other processors for competition. So it's, it's something we have to do.
I got one question. On an average, how many people paying online and people having direct deposit online with their bills, what is the percentage roughly?
Of our customers? Do you know that, Sandy? I don't.
I have to, I have to pull it. Actually, when you're looking at utility bills specifically, right?
Yeah. Well, the reason being is, is all these things can be viewed online if you have an account. So the people who are paying online are naturally going on. Because, see, I just naturally pay mine. I don't have it directly taken out, which means they're going to be online anyway. What is the cost savings with the people who are doing this on being able to not print and not send out their billing statements each month in order to recoup some of that cost? So we're not spending money on somebody who doesn't even pay attention. They can go in and just view it online anyway while they're taking care of things.
And that's certainly a future plan as well, to start migrating to paperless on the bills. Definitely a desire of us because right now, we do mail out bills to everyone. Even if you're paying, if it's automatically withdrawn, you're getting a paper bill. That's the way our system is built. But that is a goal in the future as well, to start migrating that utility system. So you can go online, check your bill, pay it, and not even receive a paper statement. Because if you're like me, I don't like to get paper statements in the mail, but.
The only problem you've got is there are still a majority of people in this town, not a majority, a small amount, that still have no computers, have no emails or anything else. I mean, I would assume we'd have to maintain some kind of a bit. But the point is, for a majority, for the people who either pay it online or have it taken directly out of their accounts, you know, I figure with the amount of printing and the cost of mailing it out, that we could recoup some of our fees right there.
Absolutely. No, that's really a good, good concept for us.
All right, well, thank you for the presentation, Bill. And appreciate the work on this. So moving along, item number two is a utility rate review. And again, Bill, tell me.
Lynn, we'll get that brought up on the screen here. All right, so we introduced this a little bit in our budget presentation in September. This is the in-depth now. And as you see on your desk, there are lots of slides here. So I'll try to cruise along a bit. But we do have a few things to talk about in here that that are important. So city enterprise funds, when we, you know, what funds are we looking at? Refuge fund, sewer, water, stormwater. And within the refuse fund, we have all these different kind of departments of refuse. We have the garbage, where we go around and collect the garbage. We're the only one in town that, you know, we allow to collect garbage. Recycling, same thing. Landfill, what's going on out there? The city runs the landfill. Demolition out at the landfill, that's your building waste kind of things that gets brought out there. And roll-off are those great big, you know, 30-yard dumpsters you see. So an average utility bill right now for a customer using 6,000 gallons of water, we just lay that out for you, comes up to about $111. So when did we change rates last? So with COVID, when we came towards 2021, we didn't really want to make any changes. You, as a city council, said, let's just hold tight with that. Remember, we made no changes to the levy for 2021. You made the choice to also, let's hold things steady in the enterprise funds as well. We only increased the disposal area of the refuse fund out of all those enterprise funds because the city was receiving an increase in the cost of disposal. That's why we did tweak that one. Everything else stayed the same for 2021. You can see recycling and tree management. It was back in 2017. 2020, we had various changes, dumpster and roll-offs, water, sewer, and storm. And demolition, we changed back in 2019. So here's where we fall for the water, sewer, and stormwater. So you can kind of see in the, in the middle of this chart, AE2S is a engineering firm that performs a survey each year. And we participate in that so we can get good data like this to see where we fall in with comparable cities. The refuse fund, again, we garbage, we collect it, we dispose of it. We have our recycling program. Tree management, that is taking care of the trees out at the landfill once they're brought out there. Landfill, demo, and roll-off. So current trend, operational costs of garbage, they continue to rise. Garbage is expensive, and it just continues to go up. We are going to see an increase from Ottertail County because we go around and collect our garbage, and then we dispose of it with Ottertail County, going up about two and a half percent. So you're going to see we're looking at just increasing our disposal charge, that same two and a half percent. We're also looking at 3% increase in the residential commercial collection fees in 2022. And then I talked about the disposal there. And that's, you know, 3% is to to cover the general inflation. Certainly, the city sees increased costs across the board as well, as we do everywhere right now. So with recycling and garbage here, we did see an initial drop in the tons of garbage into the waste stream when we sent out single sort recycling. So we did see that happen back in 17. But all of our costs continue, you know, to rise. And then without corresponding drops any longer in that garbage in the waste stream. So I think our recycling is holding pretty stable, and so is our garbage disposal. We're not seeing, you know, great big increases in recycling numbers. People are being consistent with that, I think, as we're seeing. So we are looking at a recycling charge here going from $6 to $6.50 per month. That commercial would be 7.58 to $8.20 per month. And that would be, you know, your time per month on that commercial route. So we do look at, we need to increase recycling rates. And, you know, that's probably not always a popular thing to do. But recycling, it costs us money to do it. It's, we're not making money on recycling by selling product or anything. Basically, we're managing that waste stream is what we're doing. That's where those costs come from. I forget if there's another slide later in here, but maybe I will talk about it right now. I know in the past, we've talked about, you know, right now, Guy, we pick up recycling every other week, right? And for the most part, we're seeing that, you know, working out really well. I think Caroline, you might have brought up in the past, would we ever look at going to, you know, a weekly route of that? Right now, we probably recommend we don't go that route. But if someone wanted another recycling can for more capacity of recycling, we would bring that out to them. We, we receive very few requests on that. If we were to change up the route and go more often, we'd actually probably have to hire another person and probably get another truck out there. So big expense to get the bang for the buck on that. But we certainly would bring out another can to someone.
And is there a charge for that second can?
Good question.
Probably wouldn't be, would there? Because it's just, yeah, just recycling, it's the same. There's, we got two, we got three. I feel like karyosis all of a sudden. So that's recycling.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, so tree management here. Fee covers are, again, taking care of the trees out at the landfill. We used to, you know, grind trees. We bought that tree burner. We're burning mainly in the wintertime, obviously, when everyone has their windows closed and, you know, getting the right wind directions. But that's been working really well.
They're burning now.
Okay.
I was out there the other day, and they were burning.
Sounds good. So we are not recommending any changes to that tree management fee. We feel we're adequately covered there. Demo debris, this is, this is what I want to talk a little bit about. And I promise when we get to the other enterprise funds, I'll try to speed it up. But refuse is our most difficult area to work with as well. But currently, we charge $24 a ton. No, 25. We were at 24, we increased to 25 in 2019. And then the numbers, when we look at this, the cost of doing demolition out at our landfill, to break even on that, we would need to go to $31 per ton or per cubic yard, I mean, at the landfill. That's a high number when you look at comparison to Ottertail County and the other counties surrounding us. Right now, I know over in Henning and New York Mills, the county rate is $21 per ton. And then it's lower than that at Battle Lake and Henning?
Yes, Henning.
Henning, because those, no, Pelican Rapids, Battle Lake. Because those, you're limited to just three yards of demo going there. So that's purely just a transfer station. So it's even lower there. Now, remember, the city of Fergus Falls, we were the first ones to have to do a lined cell in our demolition cell. So we are kind of the ones that paved the way for this. So it was much more expensive than previously operating this. Now, when other landfills around the state have, you know, get to the point of having to replace their demolition cell, they will have to do lined landfills. Costs are going to go up there as well. We've been talking with Ottertail County about this a little bit because as I came up with these numbers, I'm like, ugh, you know, this is expensive. I want to talk, you know, to the solid waste area at the county, get their opinion of that. They're not surprised at the numbers I'm sharing. It's just I don't like them. So one concept we're thinking and want to see what, what your feelings are. I kind of have an idea what you think. But the county is looking at, for landfills and demolition, would we look at regionalization in the future where, you know, where we partner with the county on this? Instead of Fergus Falls, we're the only city in the county that runs our own landfill. Everything else is county-run. Counties are responsible for solid waste within their counties. So would we look at the concept of something, you know, being all together on landfills and that with Ottertail County? And that way, the rates would be the same across the county instead of ours being higher here in Fergus Falls. So A, would you like us to explore that option? I think we should at least explore it.
Yeah.
So I'm seeing some head nodding on that. So I'm talking with Chris McCon on that, and I think we'll, we'll look at that. That being said, I want to chew on this rate a little more. I should have also started this presentation. I'm not asking for your approval of anything on these today. They'll come back in the budget presentation in December. So we have a little time to chew on these as well. But this is what the numbers say the rate needs to be. So if we did something less than that, we would go into 2022 knowing we would be taking a loss. And basically, other areas of the refuse fund would have to make that up for the demolition cell. Am I missing anything on that, Sandy, that I was going to say? Okay. So.
I got one question.
Sure.
When we got this all done and we switched over to the higher rates, did we see a drop off of people coming here and then taking their trash to other landfills? Or did it pretty much stay the same?
I think it was pretty much the same. We have seen some contractors maybe go, you know, if it was a large job, maybe over to Henning. 2020, and we'll, we'll actually see some of this. We actually saw a larger increase in our revenue. So people were at home doing more projects, disposing of more demo debris. We actually saw a large increase in revenue during 2020. And that's now come back down in 2021 to be more like 2019. So again, if you're a resident coming out with just a few yards, you probably don't feel, you know, the pain of that. It's these big jobs. But of course, the big jobs are done by contractor. They're also passed on to the homeowner who's, you know, doing that remodeling project, that roofing job or whatnot. So it's all built in the cost of that project as well.
Bill, if they're going to haul that stuff to Henning or someplace, there's an expense in that, too.
Absolutely, right.
I mean, they've got a man driving that truck. They've got a truck, there's expense there. I mean, time, it, I would think almost breaks even.
So.
And disposing of, you know, waste and demolition in an environmentally conscious way is expensive. I mean, we don't dump our garbage in the ditches anymore.
Right.
It's like, that's the cost of what it is.
Right. So that's the demo rate. I think we'll, we'll move on from there. So landfill, we also have MSW disposal costs out there. That's if someone brings out regular garbage and we transfer that over to Ottertail County then. Again, going up two and a half percent because we're seeing the same increase on the other side. So soft goods, couches, chairs, mattresses, treated lumber, all of those things have to get trucked over to Gwinnett, North Dakota because we're not allowed to put that in our demolition landfill here. So over in Gwinnett, we're, we're getting charged $24 for each mattress that gets brought over there. We are not charging that much here for that. So that's an automatic loss on that. And then, of course, we have the cost to haul over there as well. So we are looking at, so changing our MSW rate from 20 to 2150, and then looking at combining those soft goods with bypass so that they're all the same rate. If you come in, and our guys at the landfill are very good at knowing that king-sized mattress is one and a half yard, queen is a one yard. So they, they'll estimate that appropriately. We combine that and put that in with our bypass rate, but move that from 21 to 25 per cubic yard. It just simplifies it. Our guys out there are really, they think about the rate structure and how this works. Sandy has been working with Scott out there. Just, he's really doing a great job for us and helping us to, what's the right thing to do here? So they, they with us agree this is a good change on that. Instead of charging by the chair, by the couch, by the mattress, rolling them together because they all go together over to Gwinnett anyway. And we should be collecting enough to cover that mattress charge out at Gwinnett as well. Okay, refuse fund operations. We just have some charts of where we've been. I won't go through these in detail. You can look through them at your leisure. But as every other year, if we do nothing in the refuse fund, if we don't make changes, you're going to start to see change in net position start, you know, just a negative decline there. So obviously, because we have inflation going up on this side, and if we don't raise revenues with that, we're going to, we're going to go backwards. This is what would happen to the cash in that fund if we did nothing. We have some capital projects coming out at the landfill. The first blue bar there in 2023 is creating a new demolition cell and then closing the the previous one. So you dig one new cell, close the other. And then in 2024, putting in a lift station and force main to catch that leachate and send that into the sanitary sewer system to be treated. Then this is projections with those rate increases we put. So you can, our goal is we try to break even on this. We're not, you know, huge in net profit in the refuse business, but maintain so we can have monies to do those capital improvements and, and keep things going. And that's what the cash balance would do then. You know, we have a drop when you do those projects and then start coming back up until you have the next project and bring it down. Sewer fund, again, we're not recommending any changes to the sewer fund for 2022. We're kind of looking at 3% every other year on that one. So this is where we've been again with sewer fund. So if we don't do increases, then you can see a negative decline. 2024, look at that big loss, and you're probably going to ask what's going on there? That would be the demolition of the old wastewater treatment plant. That is not a new asset to depreciate, so that all gets expensed in one year. That's why we see a big drop there. And then we're back to, back to kind of normal operations. That cash balance, you can see what would happen there if you did nothing with rates. Capital improvements, some, you're going to see in water, sewer and stormwater. We've got Stanton Avenue coming. We've got things in the capital improvement plan for International Drive as an option. Junius is another one. So street utilities, kind of things going on in those. And that's kind of what you see here as well as our general infrastructure replacements as well. So here are the current rates. Again, we're not looking at changing them, but we put them in here for your information. On flat charges and then the flow charges for sewer. And then with those revenue increases, keeping that change in net position positive. Again, you still have a large decrease in 2024, but that's that demolition of the old plant. And then managing that cash balance with some of those increases. And you can see kind of doing that every other year. And that's where we fall with sewer. So we have maintained rates pretty well from the beginning of that sewer plant. So you can see we're pretty reasonable compared to other cities. Water operations. We do have large change in net position here to the good. Again, this fund doesn't have as much cash in the bank as the sewer fund. So we've been kind of aggressive with some of the increases, but we have large projects in the water fund coming in the future and some we're working on right now as well. If, again, we did nothing with revenue, you see that same decline in the performance. Cash balance again would be dropping some as well with that. Same type of capital improvements I talked about in the sewer fund in here. We planned for those. And then some of the capital improvements, so the 1914 water reservoir, old water reservoir at the end of its useful life, we need to look at new construction of that of $1.6 million. And that is in those blue bars of capital that you saw on the previous page. Reservoir number two right now is currently in the process of being rehabbed. So that's, one is being done. And then we, our two water towers will need to be repainted. Now, when we say repainted, it's a, you know, a total rejuvenation of those as well to, to keep those in tip top shape. And those are some of the estimates there that are built in here. That's why we need those revenues coming in the waterfront right now. You know, looking at funding that one cash when that comes through instead of bonding.
When they recondition those towers, do they do something on the inside, too? Like a new coating or? Okay.
Yep.
So we have to take that water tower completely out of service for a little while? How long a period is that?
Depends amount of work, if it's a spot or a flow. You don't have too much.
Oh, okay. And we do okay without that tower in the meantime?
There's an area that would have lower pressure, the Vettolm area. It would still have adequate pressure to just lower.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's why we would stage all these things. So you're doing one reservoir here and certainly not two at the same time.
Yeah.
So water rates, we're looking at going up 3% just to keep up with inflation and looking at that for subsequent years. So not like the sewer fund of doing every other year, but we're kind of projecting out every year kind of a, a general increase of 3%. And doing that both to the flat and the flows. And then here's our flat rates. You can see the changes there. And there's our flow rates. Changes showing those increases there of 3%. And then again, the same operations to keep those positive. And then maintaining where, where we've been planning for that and keeping our cash balance. And notice this cash balance in that $4 million range versus the $11 million range on the sewer fund. That's where I was making reference to that. Here's where we fall with water rates. Again, reasonable compared to other cities. And you'll notice the top of this slide says for surface water systems reporting softening. We soften our water here in Fergus. Not all cities do. It is more expensive to soften your water at the plant, but then you don't need water softeners in your home, so. And this just shows that including, excluding Minneapolis-St. Paul, but I think this is for all systems then. Stormwater operations. You can see this is our history where we've been. Here's if we did no increases in that. Again, the cash balance would go down if we made no increases. Same type of capital projects as the water and sewer, we do all those. You know, if you're doing a, a street project, you look at all your utilities at the same time. So we're not looking at an increase in storm for 2022, but then looking at rate changes for 23 and 25 in there. And again, to maintain that cash balance, again, much lower balance here in these, in this fund. And then this just shows where we're currently at, so no changes there. This shows where we're at with storm water compared to other cities. And then we have an average utility bill with these changes. And you can see the increase is roughly 2.1% when it's all said and done from these 46 slides we've looked at. So the schedule, last slide here for you. We talked about it back in September, just kind of introduced it. We're here today. We'll come back, have this incorporated into the budget. And then the refuse and the water rate changes would be effective for the bills that are printed in January and mailed out the end of January. Again, when we do sewer, we do those in April, but we're not making any changes to sewer or stormwater this year.
Thanks, Bill. So are you looking for us to move this to the December meeting? Or do you need, we don't need action on this on Monday?
Nope, you don't need action on Monday. If you're okay with us incorporating this into the budget.
And then have any discussions at that?
Exactly. And we'll talk a little bit more about that demo rate that.
So would someone like to make a motion that this is incorporated in the budget and we can make any changes at that point?
I'll make that motion and then I have a quick comment.
Sure, Tom, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Jim, go ahead, Tom.
On, just to kind of get it on everybody's radar in case folks aren't aware of it, the Cedar at the county has worked hard with, with some other folks to get a, a large grant from the, so from the PCA, the, the composting grant?
It is, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so the, the Pollution Control Agency gave us a grant to implement commercial composting in town here. Like Lake Region, we're working on getting on board. The schools are on board. There's some businesses in Henning and, you know, like the large retirement homes and stuff. And what that's going to do is, you know, you think about what places with large food service operations throw away, it's bags full of wet, heavy food garbage. And, and what this composting is going to do is take that out of the waste stream. And so instead of that stuff and all the paper towels that we use, say, at Lake Region Healthcare and at the nursing homes, all of that's going to get bagged separately in compostable bags and picked up and then, and then taken to a composting facility versus being, you know, just put in a landfill till the end of time. So that's, that's pretty exciting that, because, because it's, it's expensive to, to landfill that wet, heavy garbage. And now we're going to be able to take it and turn it into a usable product. I mean, it's, it's a win for everybody. It's a great, great deal. So it'd be awesome someday if we could, you know, transition to a residential composting pickup, but that, you know, might be a little ways off. So just to let folks know about that.
I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, Guy brought that to our attention yesterday, and I forgot to mention that this, that is an exciting project, so.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Along with that, if I may.
Yes, please.
I'll be coming to the next committee meeting asking for a variance for Otter Tail County to actually pick up that waste, you know, city limits.
Yeah. Yeah, we ran into that with our restaurant, people wanting to pick up waste and it's, it does require a variance. It's not in the city code. Okay, yeah, sounds good. Thank you, Tom. So the motion is to move this or incorporate this into the budget and have that discussion as part of the larger budget on December 6. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll say good morning to Brian Yvaro, and he'll give us an update on the regional treatment phase three preservation project.
Say good morning, Your Honor, and members of the council. At October 4th, the city council had a work session in regards to potential options for the regional treatment center, phase three preservation mothball project. Since then, I've been working with Stan Tech, and I have attached two cost estimate schedules referred to as Schedule A and Schedule B that's included in your packet. Schedule A is for, I like, I'd like to go a little bit more in depth, which is kind of a potential that could be considered a base contract work. But however, this is all pending council approval. Schedule B kind of shows a lot of the work consistent with all the remaining buildings. But I'm just going to refer to Schedule A, and I do have a map, if you wouldn't mind, Lynn. Just a campus map so we're all, can recall the building numbers here. But on Schedule A, is what we might be looking at, we're looking at doing some mothballing work to building number one, which is the Kirk Pride. We're looking at work such as window replacement and floors, second, third and fourth. Mold remediation throughout. We're looking to reattach the globe and doing some electrical grounding, repair work. We're also looking at building ventilation system, including louvers and fabric ducting throughout the whole tower system. And then we're also looking to do access improvements, remove staircase closures, basically to look to open up access to this building if everything's mitigated. We're also looking for the basement on Schedule A. Work on building 23 East attached, we're looking to replace roof shingles. On building 27 West attached, we're looking to replace roof shingles, EDM roofing and repair and replace brick and stone. If you recall, this building is fenced off right now, and it depends if the council wants to proceed with doing some of that kind of repaired masonry. I want to note with all this work, we're estimating the total construction cost of about $1.6 million. If you look in the memo rate here, we have an estimated state grant for phase two remaining funds of about $1.71 million. I want to note if the council wants to look at work that's consistent with Schedule A. In consideration of the state grant budget, we could look at the brickstone work as, as budget allows for repair work. There is some significant work there and everything, but if in consideration of budget, that's how we could position that contract.
So let me just make sure I understand. Are you saying that that 1.6 includes some, but maybe potentially not all of the brick and stone?
Correct.
So we get started, but we're not going to go over the budget is what you're saying?
Correct. I recall a few years ago, we did do some quotes on some of that building repair. That's why we fenced it off at that time. That was about $750,000 if I remember. So like I mentioned, there's a place holder if we want to do that brickstone or else if the council wants to admit it, if we want to look at some other features on the campus or however preserve those funds too as well.
How much in that 1.69 or whatever it is? How much is in there for the brick and stonework?
No, we have a cost estimate with all contingencies of about $530,000.
But there's a not, just to be clear, there's a not to exceed, right?
Correct. Correct. We would do it per square foot price if they want to proceed. Or we could just go with permit. We could go with these, these recommendations on Schedule A. Building 1, 23 and 27, we're all correct. We've had about that $1.2 million estimated right now, too, and preserving about $400,000 of the phase two state grant. So we have options.
And that, there's timing on that phase two, what's, do we, to use those funds?
By the end of '22, I believe.
Yes.
We're just finalizing that grant with deed right now, actually. I just got, yeah, just the signature.
Twenty-two. And do we have some other thoughts on what, you know, what might be some uses for that?
You know, on Schedule B, it shows all the remaining buildings that pretty much consists of mold remediation, remediation, some ventilation work and just general repairs. But as I noted in the previous memo, you know, that work alone is about $4.8 million that we're estimating. So clearly, we don't have enough funds. So it's kind of one of these things of, in my opinion, maintaining on some of the administration and then east and west attached, that type, that sorts of work. If that's, that's what I'm recommending, we kind of stick with at this time.
Do you have a recommendation on the, on the brickwork? I mean, do you think it's wise to keep that $480,000 for other uses or?
I think we can have more discussions on those. I think we could stage it up and I'd have to get a professional services agreement for final design. But I think there's more time to evaluate once we get more detailed design, what those actual costs were and how we'd want to proceed with that.
So for now, what you're just asking today is just to initiate this public improvement project.
What I'm requesting is to initiate public improvements, 9508. And I'm just looking for general consensus based on that work session. Is this kind of a general consensus with the council would like to pursue a little bit more refined the scope?
Sounds good. Brent?
Now, with Schedule A, and we're not, that means we're not doing anything to the rest of the buildings that you have in Schedule B. Are buildings 23, 27 and 21 going to be sealed off from the rest of them? Because if we do no repairs on the rest of them, the current moisture in there, any future leaks in the roof is going to bleed right back into the buildings that we just got done working on. And I'm just curious, is there going to be any kind of way of sealing off these three buildings from the rest if we go with that step?
Your Honor, Councilmember, yes. That, that would be the main intent. If we're going to do mold remediation in the tower, obviously, we need to make, like, make, keep that isolated too and in spaces. So that would be the intent under Schedule A about isolating that, those buildings from the current wings.
Well, the biggest thing is even though we're not doing mold remediation on the other two buildings, wouldn't it be smart enough if we are going to leave them up to seal them off also? So what's going on inside there doesn't get any worse?
Honored for building 23 and 27?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're not looking to do any mold remediation on those, just general roof repairs of that work.
Yeah, because I mean, if we're going to do that and then all of a sudden we don't do anything to the remain, the, excuse me, the remaining portion. I mean, if we don't seal them off, I mean, because I don't feel we need to replace the shingles on 23 and 27 completely. I just think we need to go up there and seal them up, do the repairs to keep the water out because anybody who comes in and does them may not want that roof under. They may want to go with something different, different color, different style, different material. And plus the fact is, if we have to go in, you know, and take them down, you know, then the state's going to look at us and say, hey, we just, you just spent a whole bunch of our money from phase two on these, and now you're taking them down and you want more money to tear down what you just did. So, you know, I would like to, you know, keep the cost down to a minimum and maybe seal off those buildings because the last contractor that we had that was interested in these said these were the only two that were actually kind of usable because of their size as far as the amount of square footage for apartments, retail, whatever it is. So I can understand possibly wanting to keep them, but I'd like to keep the cost down to a minimum on it. So we, when we go to the state in the future, you know, you know, if we have to take more down, that they're not going to look at us and say, hey, you just spent a million dollars on this, and now you want to tear it down with more money that we're giving you? That just doesn't come across as responsible. I mean, so if we're going to patch the roof and maybe just seal off those buildings to keep that moisture from those center portions from getting inside of, that would be my suggestion.
Thanks, Brent. So is, is my understanding, so if we initiate this public improvement, 9508, you'll come back then with a plan that the council will be able to, you know, yes, we're going to do this, no, we're not going to do this. Here's the, approve that?
Refinement, you know, at, at the, at the work session, it was, there was a lot of items, you know, what, what direction does the council want to proceed with any of this work? So, yeah, we're, we'd refine it as we go. And in response to Mr. Thompson's comments and everything, if it's just spot repairs, we can look at doing some alternates too as well. Instead of a full replacement, maybe we'll do some spot repairs and then do an alternate bid. Well, how much for the whole entire roof too as well? Those are, those are ways we could develop the bidding packages.
Yes, Scott?
I think that we're working with some pretty dated information, and that it's unfortunate, but that's just what you've got to work with. These recommendations were made by Stan Tech years ago. And when we talk about patching roofs and stuff, we don't have a current assessment of what's necessary. And so this group of work that's suggested in Schedule A, I think it ought to include roof repairs across the entire horseshoe, you know, in the other intermediate buildings between the center and the, and the wings. And so that's where, you know, if we've got 1.7 to work with, there maybe needs to be some, I don't know, negotiation or whatever on how much of the brick we may or may not do, how many windows we may or may not do so that we can do more of the roof repair. Because it seems like that's the critical need, is we need to keep the water out and we need to keep it out of the entire thing. As Brent mentioned, if you've got trouble leaking in here, it gets throughout. And so it doesn't look like we're addressing the entire roof situation with the Schedule A recommendation. So it seems to me that this needs a little bit more work before we're going to be able to go ahead with it. We need to know what it's going to cost us to put the patching if we were going to take that approach as opposed to full, full roof replacement. As Brent said, you know, rather than replacing an entire roof, maybe we can seal it with a, a patch approach. And I wouldn't be opposed to that. And I think that we could patch and repair and keep the water out across the entire structure probably for less than what it would cost to replace completely, you know, in certain areas. But then again, we don't know that. We haven't had quotes given to us on what it's going to cost to actually do that. So I think that's a, that's a significant question. If we know what it is going to cost to keep the water out, then we can go beyond that to things like windows or things like replacing the brick. One other question, or one other comment, though, that I want to make regarding Brent's comments on whether the state will say this or that if we spend money on something and then tear it down. Frankly, that didn't slow them down any when we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix the roofs above the kitchen and then tore those down two years later in that phase two demolition. So I think the idea of even going down that road in the conversation is a mistake. We've been given no, no indication that the city or that the state would support any further demolition. The State Historical Society has made it very clear that they don't support any of that. And in order to maintain our historical designations, there's not going to be any more demolition. That's not on the table.
Thanks, Scott. So can we get those numbers if, through the initiating the project? Can we get some of the information that the council, and bring it back for like a more refined discussion? Is that, is that a direction?
Yeah, that, yes, Your Honor, I do want to note, I can't recall off the top of my head, but you know, buildings 28, 26, 22 and 24, two of those buildings, we did have full replacements in even prior years. So they should all be in pretty good condition, but very good question, we'll, we can all certainly check in.
All right. Would someone like to recommend that we initiate, make a recommendation to the council, we initiate public improvement, 9508?
I will offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it, but I got one, one last question.
Bill, did you have a comment?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Brent.
One other thing that I'd like to see introduced on this, because like I said, no matter what we do, I think it's going to be a while before either it gets redeveloped or we have to take down more. My concern is the city's liability. I would like to see a cost on what it's going to cost to seal up this whole lower level, all the windows, all the basement windows, to keep people out of there. Because no matter what, they're still getting in constantly and somebody's going to get hurt and we're going to get hit because we got deep pockets.
Thanks, Brent. Bill?
One other thing Brian and I will do, we'll just confirm with deed the uses of these funds. Because certainly the legislation does state use for building envelope stabilization. Our contact at deeds, that'll, make sure you check with this person higher up at deed, like windows in the tower, make sure they're going to say yes to that as an eligible expense before we do it. We will confirm that, so.
Thank you, Bill. All right, so we have a, a motion to bring, to bring the initiation of this project to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries. Thank you. And we will try to move along because I have to get some kids here in not too long. So item number four, city of Fergus Falls, ADA transition. So item number four, City of Fergus Falls ADA Transition Plan.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As part of the funding process for potential federal aid projects, the city must have on file an official written ADI transition plan for its public right of ways. The plan in general identifies obstacles within a public right of way, how to fix them and when, and lists the responsible officials. The dependencies in the plan that's attached includes a self-evaluation, schedule, budgetary information, a public outreach, grievance procedure, contact information, and ADI standards and procedures. I just wanted to know, in the past, it's been the city's standard practice to always upgrade its infrastructure to meet current ADI standards with every new construction, reconstruction, and street resurfacing project. However, like I mentioned, Mendot and the FHW is requiring we have this written document, this has been in the works for many, many years, and we're at the time where we have to complete this process. I want to note with this document, this document was created specifically to cover accessibility within the public right of ways, and does not include any information in regards to the city's programs, practices, or building facilities not related to the public right of way, so. So at this time, I'm requesting, Your Honor, the City Council, to continue this process, we must hold a public hearing on this transition plan, I'm requesting to hold a public hearing at the December 6th, 2021 City Council meeting, and I'm also requesting the City Council appoint a staff member as the ADI coordinator of public rights away. I am recommending that our senior engineering tech and sidewalk program coordinator be also appointed as a position. So at this time, Your Honor, I'm requesting to set the public hearing date and appointing a senior engineering tech to this program.
Thank you, Brian. Would someone like to make a motion that we bring that to the council? Thank you, Scott.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Caroline, anyone have any questions? Yeah, Scott?
The person that will, and that will be appointed to this job is Troy Hargie, correct?
Correct.
And so if I understand what you said, as far as the initial creation of this position, he'll have the work that you've described for the public right of way stuff, and then all this other stuff that they expect us to do, essentially it'll get added to him as he can learn it, or, or as it gets built, and there's, there's more beyond just the sidewalks, clearly, from what you've described.
Yeah, no, this is in general regards to the sidewalk, it has nothing to do with the buildings or anything about approach. As I mentioned, the city's been doing this for a while, so it's a natural fit, Troy has been in the same position and everything, so it's a pretty good segue with work that's already been performing under his current responsibilities.
So the building stuff, that'll still fall, that'll fall under his new job, or?
No.
No?
No.
So where does that go?
That's under the building official coordinate management.
Okay, so that'll just be managed the way it has been?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, any other questions for Brian? If not, all in favor of the motion to bring this to the council on Monday, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, the motion carries. Thank you. In the interest of time, I might suggest that the next two items, Claire's items, she said that she's fine to move them to Monday night for discussion, I have a feeling we're going to be discussing them again on Monday night anyway, and so maybe other than discussing them twice, we'll just bring those up for discussion on Monday, is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
All right, great, thank you, Claire. So we will move to item number seven, which is an update on Broken Down Dam, and we'll call on Guy Taylor, Public Works Director. Good morning, Guy.
Good morning, thank you, Your Honor. Back in September, HPC member Ryan Drews came to the council to highlight some conditions at Broken Down Dam Park, and he brought forth, left some recommendations for work to be done, and I set responses to all his recommendations on your desk this morning. So I'll just go through them quickly. The road leading into the park, right in here, is a gravel road, we maintain that as needed, they're asking for that road to be improved, and the parking area paved. It's, there's two city, three city residents back in there, so paving it is not practical, the park budget can't afford to pave it, so I think it's going to remain gravel. The parking lot right there is actually privately owned, and the owner, Ryan Moan, he's not really interested in selling it to the city at this point. He and the other owner, Steve Lottie, I think, they like the seclusion back there, they have a lot of night travelers, they say, out there that they're not really keen on, so they do a lot of cleanup out there for the city, actually. So the road and the parking lot, I think, will remain the same. The railings along the pathways, we can help with the HPC, put railings in, debris removal, I was shocked walking through there, like you mentioned before, we don't put stuff in the ditches anymore.
That's why the landfill rates were as cheap as they were back in the day, right?
Yeah. They were thrown in our public parks. It's right here, right along the path. Broken Down, so. There's a ravine where there's cart bodies, old stoves, and cart bodies look like they're from the 1930s, so it's been used for a dump site for many years, so it'll take some doing, but we can start work on removing that, all those items. Path maintenance, we'll start doing some regular path maintenance down there, along with leveling each terrace. We had the Conservation Corps put those steps in on both sides, the, there's steps that go from the walkway down through here, that's a steep area right there, and then back over in here, there's some more steps. Conservation Corps put those in probably five, six years ago, we can go in there and level those off, and then we'll keep them maintained with weed eaters and such. Any downed trees near the walking path, we'll take care of those. The dam structure has been just covered in graffiti, and I thought maybe we could get a sandblaster down there and maybe remove some of it, but it's not practical, so we'd probably end up just covering it with some gray paint. So we'll do that as time and funds are available. Signage, just noting some of the various historic milestones there, could be done by the HPC, direction signs around the park, we can do that. Other things down usability, we can repair and then add more picnic tables down to the lower area right along the river. The idea of a kayak or tube launch or for other watercraft, we can look into that and see if we can work with the DNR and maybe putting a kayak launch like was put at the fire station a few years ago. Designating swimming or resting areas, we feel that it's a natural park, basically, so designating swimming areas is maybe not something we need to do, but along with swimming in the area, there's some underwater hazards that we need to take care of, some rebar that's sticking out from some of the old dam structure, so we'll hopefully get that done right away in the spring, and then leveling and removing some more trees, we can look at that. Then adding art, maybe the Public Arts Commission could take care of that or help, and then, yeah, HPC, I think they're on board already to helping get some of this work done before the 150th next year, so it's going to be a work in progress. One thing I wanted to mention, there's a right of way platted through here all along, we've got Bluff Street, Oakland Avenue, I think, and then Main Street. We need to verify, but there's a property line that needs to be established here, there might, well, I know along here, there's some approachment right here, so there might be opportunity to do away with this parking area and maybe do some trading with Mr. Lottie here for a parking area to be established up in here, and that would be the access to the trail right here on the city property, where access right here is off of the Ryan Moan property, so we can look at that and have some conversations with Mr. Lottie.
Okay, thanks, Guy, for that update, anyone have any questions? All right, scene done, we will move along, and I believe that's the last item on the agenda, Lynn, do you have anything?